The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America continues to the courage for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, we have an agenda before us, are any additions or corrections to the agenda?
There's a correction on the minutes for Thursday night. I guess she did correct it already beforehand, so there won't be no corrections, I guess.
She made it.
She's ahead of you already.
She did.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda then.
A motion to second to approve agenda as presented, both of you say aye?
Aye.
We have two sets of minutes, one from last week's meeting, one from the recent one. Are there any changes or corrections to go?
Didn't you have one also for your bid open?
Yeah, that would be, that would be on six seventeen also, so it'd be like two for now.
Two of them that day. Motion by Ireland.
A second.
Thank you, both of you say aye?
Aye.
Both aye, and that's our proof. Comments to the public about the agenda, do you want to get in, will you say? Okay, we'll move along, uh, okay. Yeah, I think we have. We have a county, county property, casualty, business company, we've got two offices.
Alright.
That's not the way the land was planned, they're using this company.
Well, uh, I wasn't so sure I was gonna get here either. Little hacky for me, but I'll pass. These are just some quick summaries that we can kinda use to go over the, the program. Couple of things we'll wanna hit on when we get there, but don't be surprises as far as anything goes. Our work comp and, and overall, activity for the past year's been really quite good considering and, and so I think it's reflected mostly in the bottom line, so. We'll just start with the, with the first page, if you flip that over and go to property. We carry a blanket property coverage on the county's property of twelve million eight hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars. That's up a few hundred thousand from a year ago, just through inflation and a couple of additions, uh, changes through buildings, so for the most part, it's been the same. Uh, we're at a ninety percent co-insurance factor, which means that a hundred percent of replacement costs would be slightly more than that, but, uh, the ninety percent factor with it is a blanket, uh, gives us a little bit of leeway there. Thousand dollar deductible, and, uh, the, uh, causes of loss are special, which means any cause of loss, any damage done that's not excluded is, is a covered item.
Would, would most counties have a thousand deductible, or would they have a higher deductible than that?
Oh, I would say it's fairly, uh, fairly common, with ICAP is a thousand.
Okay, gotcha.
Good question on the deductible, I know, I know the bill's different, how about road graders and equipment out there, is that all a thousand dollars?
Yes. Uh, we do state level values each year, and try to determine somewhat in line with the values of, of a property, and I usually go through that with Paul, uh, check it out, I mean, we, they also, uh, the county will, or the insurance will do periodic evaluations, so, uh, we kinda depend on that as well, if we're not catching the building quite right and they disagree with us, uh, we can, we can discuss our differences and, and it's always good to agree with the insurance company on values, because when it comes claim time, they can't argue too much, so we wanna try to be as close as we can.
Every year, you know?
It's not every year, it's about once every three years, they do, but we, I try to go through it at least once a year, just in case there's any major changes.
Have, have they made the adjustments with the new building in Logan, the ones in Gilmore being gone and?
Yeah, I think so, I think we've got, I know we have the new buildings added. Uh, I'm not sure if any buildings, I'll need to make sure with Paul, if there's been any buildings taken out.
Might not be off yet.
Taken out, but those are, those are.
Might be one little shed rowing, you could ask them, they're very close.
But I think we've got no study. Yeah. And we do include sewer backup for a loss, uh, twenty-five thousand, we have bitter and equipment breakdown also included in.
Periods of a loss? Didn't hear it, by the way.
No, it was, it was whoever.
Somebody, no, somebody else bought it, Dickie.
Dickie bought that one, yeah.
Sorry, caught a fire.
Any questions on the property coverage? Straightforward. Uh, the crime, mine was just employee dishonesty, money and securities, we have employee dishonesty limit of two hundred thousand dollars, with a thousand dollar deductible, uh, per loss, and, uh, cash and money and securities, that's ten thousand, that's cash, I don't know that there's a whole lot of cash transactions.
No, everybody's got it.
He blew up attitude to cover it, so I know even a lot of the bills are paid electronically now by people at the treasurer's office and so forth, yeah. And we do have a two hundred thousand limit, I think we had to raise that one year when the, uh, uh, emergency management center was built. That was a special grant from the government, and I think we were carrying a hundred and fifty, which is statutory, uh, but the two hundred thousand, we put that on and it's like dollars to make a difference, so I'd never change it back. And then we do carry special, specific bonds on the board of supervisors, all the elected officials do have their own special security bond, those come due, I believe, in January, and the treasurer, uh, has to carry a separate.
Seeing as we're talking this right now, now with this expansion on the LAC down there, do we need to cover that on our policy in the construction phase?
Yeah, there should be, uh.
The builders have insurance, but do we also have to?
It just depends, you wanna make sure, we need to look at the contract and see who's responsible for the building in progress.
Okay.
If they turn it over to you in pieces, then somebody needs a builder's risk on it, whether it's the builder that carries it, or whether it's county.
He just wanna be clear.
We need to be clarified by the contract to see who's responsible.
Get you a copy of that.
Yeah, so we can take a look at that.
Okay.
Public officials, general liability, public officials and law enforcement liability, we carry a general, uh, aggregate, uh, an occurrence of two million dollars. This is to cover any general liability claim or your public official claim for you folks' law enforcement liability, this is the base policy, we do have excess over the top of that. Um, minor differences, or not minor, but some differences, employee benefits, you see down the line there, a few notches, it's a million dollars per occurrence, it's claim made, thousand dollar deductible. Uh, that's if we were to fail to offer benefits to some employee that turned back and, and turned into a claim, we have a million dollars worth of protection there. Employment practices liability, again, two million dollar, uh, limit per claim, five thousand dollar deductible, and that deductible would, would, would apply for, this is a wrongful termination or a sexual harassment, the things that would fall under the employment practices liability area. Public officials liability, that's basically to cover you folks', again, five thousand dollar deductible, two million dollar per occurrence, and law enforcement liability. Uh, one item I need to bring out, that, uh, we have a little issue with our dams, as far as there haven't been any current inspections, I believe the last one we had was on the Reasoner Dam, dated two thousand and five, uh, the insurance carrier wants current inspections done, so we're gonna have to get that taken care of.
How often, how regularly?
Well, they apparently need to be done at least once every three years. And they say, and I haven't gotten the information yet, I tried to find out who could, supposedly the DNR has a facility to work that through, 'cause this engineer's study, I mean, that's gonna be expensive, I don't think you guys wanna necessarily go through that every three years. But if the DNR will inspect them and, and give us an opinion, I think that's gonna be adequate. Anyway, if you notice down at the bottom, uh, what they've done, until that's done, this legal defense and claim payment agreement is amended to three million dollars per occurrence. That includes our CGL and excess coverage, so, uh, right now, we have six million on anything else, but we're gonna be limited three million on the dams until these inspections are done, um, and that's, uh.
Is three million enough?
Well, you know, I think we need to get the inspections done, I guess.
Is that both Humboldt and Rutherford damage?
Yes. So either one of those that causes an occurrence. Now, one thing I know, I, I know the issue though, we've been, had that lawsuit regarding property damage by some of the property owners that live up and down the river, that type of thing is, is, uh, you know, a different situation. This is property damage, should that dam go out and cause property damage, and they feel that there was negligence on the way it was maintained, that's what we're talking about. Uh, which could be significant if it happens, I don't know how much, with the, with the shallowness of the.
Reason wouldn't be so bad, the other one, you know, yeah, I don't know.
I don't know how much damage it's, I mean, when it went out a few years ago, it was much more severe, 'cause there was a lot more water going down there now than, than there would be now. But still, it's something we need to address, and I need to point it out to you, because they're, they're putting that caveat in, I, I mean, it was.
I'll go out and.
We had to negotiate.
Call Todd Lee and ask him about that DNR thing.
Yeah, 'cause they got Brennan coming down to fix that cable, and that's Brennan. See if he knows, and we gotta find out who, who I can get in here, who DNR can get up here to handle it.
They sent a diver down here at the Reasoner Dam, so he's looking at the gates.
Right, that's in that report, that last one we had. There's nothing different than that, I think, I think.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
They asked if anything had been done, 'cause there were some recommendations made on that report, and according to Todd, I don't think we have corrected any of them, so. I think they, you know, that might have solved the problem had they been done, but since they weren't done now, they might not.
Who did that report, do you remember?
I didn't do it, no, it was an engineering firm.
Engineering firm, it might have been Brennan that did it.
Could have been. I had a copy of it, uh, Todd gave me a copy of it. But it was fairly extensive, yeah, and I don't think they're looking for anything quite that extensive, but, uh, we need to have it looked at, I guess, and brought up to speed, so. Any other questions on, uh, liability side of things? I just wanted to point that one thing out that we, we need to get working on. Business auto, that's our fleet for all the departments, again, we carry a million dollar combin- combined single limit for bodily injury, property damage, uninsured motors, and, uh, underinsured motors. Uh, we do carry a comprehensive deductible of two fifty on any loss such as hay over, we thought we might have this morning, we did have a little bit, but I don't think there's anything significant that would cause vehicle damage here, but could have been some areas around the county where trucks or some forth were, so, uh, Paul's usually pretty good on top of that stuff. Five hundred dollar collision deductible, uh, I guess that was to answer juries, uh, that is a little different than the, uh, the equipment for the road graders and so forth, so. Uh, anyway, we go through the fleet, make sure everything is covered, we do have hired and borrowed liability and non-owned liabilities, so should one of you folks go to a meeting on behalf of the county, the county's coverage is gonna back your personal auto policy up as far as any liability thing that could be brought on you and the county for a loss if you're in county business.
I know we have, just last year, I think you told us one of the series, uh, two, the five hundred dollar media, most personal people carry higher than that, do you practice it, do you have a balance?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I can look at it as far as a quote, but.
Todd will take care of it, he's gonna talk to DNR, he's gonna tell the company to get another quote.
See if we can get some other opinions.
DNR is where I should start.
Uh, that's what they told me, that's when I asked the, I asked the, uh, insurance carrier, you know, uh, how to go about, that they'd always be acceptable, and I think the DNR is one you can get done with, costing you guys a lot of.
He seemed to know who he could talk to, and I don't know if he was aware that hadn't been done, you know, Jimmy, if I was the last one that did, he probably.
Yeah, that last report to Todd, maybe, and I sent that in, but that wasn't recent enough to satisfy him.
So he'll, I know Todd will get it done, so.
I told him, I told him, Paul, you. I will get Todd to make sure we get followed up on and get it done, hopefully we can get that exclusion waived, and get it back up to six million.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good.
Uh, equipment floater, again, we have a list of all the, the larger pieces of equipment for the, uh, county, the road graders, the backhoes, those types of things. Uh, and in addition, under the equipment floater, we include our computer hardware and software, uh, computer virus protection. Uh, that's mostly a, uh, that, that's to help clean stuff up, I guess, as far as, as an additional cost that you might run into if there's viruses that are found in the computers. Uh, we pay up to fifty thousand dollars to kinda get that eradicated and get things cleaned up. Electronic data, these are things that are stored, that's reconstruction expense again, or extra expense to help pay for the reconstruction cost. I would imagine we have a fairly, use a fairly good backup system, so hopefully some of that wouldn't be huge issues, but this virus thing can be fairly significant. And you need to be on top of that. Um, anything newly purchased, we have thirty percent of our scheduled limit, and, uh, that's two million eight hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, so. Uh, thirty percent of that would cover, cover most of the single items, I think, that we'd ever purchase. Uh, if we did have something larger than that, obviously, we just need to make an adjustment for it, and it, they should be added right away, but I know sometimes the smaller items especially can slip by and not get added, so. We do try to do the inventory, you know, at least once a year, and make sure we catch those things, but in the meantime, if something's been added during the year, you don't need to worry too much about it as long as it's within that limit. We'll pick it up, deductible begins a thousand dollars, um, we do have some items that replacement cost and some that ACV, actual cash value, depending on their use and their age and so forth, uh, most of the new road graders and, and larger pieces of equipment, we do carry at replacement cost to make sure that we can replace them, uh, with a like kind of quality on a new status versus having to buy used if something should happen. Uh, leased or rented, if they need to lease a piece of equipment, uh, that we don't own temporarily, we do have automatic coverage up to fifty thousand per piece. That would cover most of the smaller items, I mean, if you're out there, even to lease a crane, usually crane leasing comes with the operator and, and you're just paying a fee for it. Uh, generally, it's, if, this would be a piece that your, your employees might be operating, so it'd be more like a backhoe or something that they're familiar with and can operate. And a lot of times, the leasing companies, they will require you to carry insurance on them, so we do have that available. And it is available automatically within the program. Uh, pollution cleanup and removal, if you have a gas spill or something on site, or, or spill, high dog hose breaks, that type of thing, we'll pay to clean up the pollution that that would cause. And again, that schedule, I try to go through with, with the departments and, and, pretty much, Paul and Todd are the two main ones, we have equipment that would, are scheduled. Any questions on that?
Yeah, normally if they have a breakdown, if the company was leasing something, it's true, yeah.
Well, yeah, it's temporary, you know, sometimes they'll give you a substitute until you can get your, get your new piece fixed, or get one ordered and bought and into place. Uh, workers' compensation, again, this is, uh, we've made some good strides there. I remember a few years ago, we were, we were looking at an experience mod almost double of what this one is now. So we've come around ways, uh, the last few years to get that down, we're seeing some really good credits, premium credits, uh, through the ISAC program, uh, all of these things are reflected in your bottom line premium, you know, our cost code premium would result in a hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollar cost, but with our discounts and premium modifications, we're getting that down to a bottom line of seventy-seven thousand seven forty-nine this year, so. That will be audited, Chris is familiar with that, I think, and they sent notice that they'll be coming around here. Last year, we had a fairly significant audit, I don't anticipate that we should have quite as bad, maybe this year still for two thousand and fourteen, but two thousand and fifteen, we shouldn't be pretty much in line, 'cause they kinda brought those payrolls up to what they're auditing, so. Unless something changes significantly with a higher, uh, type thing, we'll, we'll be a little bit closer than we have now, but, uh, uh, last year, I think we had about a fourteen thousand dollar audit or so, but we had, I went through all this stuff, I remember you and I went through it to make sure that we hadn't missed something, 'cause that was a fairly significant change, but, uh, I think we're catching, catching up on that.
Do we expect that play for millions or?
Uh, probably not to hold, I, we're not gonna make strides like we've made now, yeah, if we continue to have good years, we, we, you know, I think it improved a couple of hundreds from last year. So it's still improving, but it's not gonna make the kinda strides that we had in the past.
There is potential, I mean, we've seen, whether it's manufacturers or some others, you know, on point eight-two, point eight-one, so there's, I mean, there's not a whole lot of room, but there's some.
Yeah, it gets down there to where, you know, you're gonna have a few.
You're back under one, finally, that's.
Yeah, but you're just getting down to the point where you're, you're, you know, that's saying you're sixteen percent better than average now, so that's a good, that's a good position to be versus where we were a while ago.
That's another way to look at it.
So anyway, good job there, gonna keep working, I know they, the, um, IMWCA does have some programs, uh, they want some safety issues taken care of, Paul's not quite sure what to do, there is a, is a contact person we can use at some of the other counties, I think he's actually an employee of maybe Palo Alto or some county, I have talked to him, he's willing to.
He a primary engineer?
He's willing to do one for Humboldt County, but it'll probably involve a fee, so maybe we can get a quote from that and see what that study would cost, it's more of a, uh, you know, getting, uh, getting some guidelines and specifications in place as far as your department heads and that type of thing. But I think for the most part, we're getting, we're getting through it, learning how to use it, and, uh, knock on wood, the best thing is we just haven't had a lot of claims, but when we have had them, uh, there's been a couple of cases where people get a little excited about, oh geez, you know, I gotta send him down here when he needs to have this done, and you know, you just need to use your common sense, if somebody's bleeding, you wanna get them taken care of real quick, you know?
That's the number one priority.
If it's a strained back or strained muscle, I, we kinda wanna follow the procedure where it's not a critical issue, so that we don't get stuck in it. I mean, it's not, not like we're gonna deny a claim, but, you know, there are ways to really keep those claims under control and, and, uh, make sure that they're taken care of in the best manner possible without running into a, you know, we don't wanna turn a two thousand dollar claim into a twenty thousand dollar claim, because we haven't managed it properly, so that's the key.
Those in that company have a guy coming around, and, well, I know the landfill, they were about ready to, for that's landfill, they were ready to kick them out, they were so bad.
On what?
Unit mod.
Unit, uh, oh.
Word count, we're down, we just had it at our last meeting last week, and down to one point four seven, and we were up closer to two. I mean, it was.
I mean, they'll do all the safety training you want, we, we have a guy, we have a whole department dedicated to that, and that's, I mean, I think they're really encouraging that to do, to do more training, uh, and that goes a long ways, but it's, it's not the total answer, you know, you, you can train all you want, but it's in the field, making sure that your supervisors, make sure your people are using their safety harnesses, make sure they're using their helmets, make sure they're using their safety glasses, those are the things that prevent claims. You can tell them all you want, so they like to make sure it's in action and that the supervisors or the department heads follow through and, and, uh, let their employees know, you know, how important that is that they do that, so. Two or three eye injuries, and you find out the guys aren't wearing safety glasses, it's gonna be a.
We, we gotta come up to, uh, industry standards, just like R and C's or electrical companies, they all have a safety project manager, and they have safety, I mean, they actually have a guy on staff that goes around and look at their claims, they're some of the best in the shit, you know, so I, I don't think any of this is out of line, you know, it's just.
Now, it's good, it's a good problem, you can see, I mean, we've had some good results, I mean, they were paying a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for their comp a few years ago, so. It's gonna come along, they've got it.
Like cutting that.
The pot, you know, they have a bean plant relic, and their, their safety is just meticulous as can be, but they don't have injuries either, so they have a big liability there. Yeah. So that's an, that's an important issue, and we've, and, and, you know, I think everybody can be patted on the back a little bit, we've done a nice job, and we just wanna make sure we, we keep, uh, keep on the right track there, so. Um, last item, the umbrella coverage, uh, we have a four million dollar excess. That's over your other basic coverages of two million or one million low that they might occur, uh, first dollar defense limit. And, uh, we did, I did get options in case you're interested in looking at what additional coverages would cost, they're itemized down at the bottom to jump that up, uh, we can take it all the way up to a ten million dollar coverage, uh, at an additional premium. Where we're at, the premiums that you're gonna see on the next page reflect the four million dollars that we've had, and, uh, these would be added to that bottom line, uh, if you, if you look at it, so. Turn the next page, I guess that's where we wanna show you where we're at, what we're doing. Uh, everything is, uh, you know, relatively flat, we did have some, uh, slight increase in, uh, some of the areas I think are property and equipment floater were not rate increases more than they were just additions to, we improved some of the, uh, pieces of equipment out there, so we have a few thousand dollars more in coverage in the property and, and, uh, equipment area. Uh, but otherwise, the work comp, again, like I said last year, we did experience about a fourteen thousand dollar audit, so when you look at where we're at now versus where we are here, with that fourteen thousand, it's still a very good number, seventy-seven, seven forty-nine should be, uh, much more in line, so. Uh, overall, uh, we're at a hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven seventy-five forty-six for the entire program, and that's based on the four million dollar umbrella.
What's your feeling on the four million?
Pardon?
What's your feeling on the four million?
Well, I think it's certainly a good number, uh, it's, today's society may not be, I, I mean, you know, you look, you could.
Well, we got that case pending, you know, out there at, uh, Becker's.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, so if they win that case, I mean, what are you talking about? Total coverage they could get out of it, it's, it's putting the pieces together, a million.
Six million, like, you could go up to six million? That's where we are now.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, so we could, we're covering up to six million?
Yeah, your underlying policy will cover.
First two, that's two million and then a four addition.
Well, I think it's good coverage, I think the problem is, the more you have, the more they go after, and so, I mean, it's, realistically, I mean, that should cover the situations we run into, but if it's a bad deal, there's no, it might never enough covers the problem.
I mean, I think you have state statute to back, you know, up a little bit too, so it's not like, uh.
But, again, that's why I show those additional costs, uh, you know, you're gonna ask me, sure, I'll say go to ten million.
I know why you'd say that, I didn't know you, right?
Whatever you can, whatever you can buy. But, you know, gotta be realistic, I, I mean, that's more than we had, have had, I think, a few years ago, obviously, but that a bit, but, uh, it's less than obviously what's available, so.
Well, and I think what's probably key to the whole package is keeping up all the coverages on new changes and keeping up safety practices, all, and we see something in the county that don't look right, we bring it to the engineer's attention, you know, let's get this fixed if we can.
Right.
Yeah, and that's.
You gotta kinda do your part on the other side. We can do some loss control and try to eliminate those.
Cover all.
And, you know, there's some, there's losses out there, some of them are a little frivolous, I don't know, you know, you, you look at blame and that's where you kinda run into situations, I mean, I'd be shocked if we couldn't settle most of those claims for six million dollars.
That work comp is reflected by increased payroll too.
Yes.
We have a great safety operation, but the tax payroll.
Yeah, and that's part of that, like I said, like, we hadn't audited a fourteen thousand dollars last year, 'cause our payrolls were based on, we did a, we did the. Like I said, like we hadn't audited $14,000 last year because our payrolls were based on, we did a, we did the bid process and they were kind of taken off previous years while we, we had some pretty good increases over those years. Now we should be relatively caught because they're using those audited figures to figure our new premium versus two-year-old figures. So they would be in good line. But yeah, that's obviously a big part of it was increased, the increased payrolls.
Anybody got other questions or extra material?
Yeah, I just have one thing.
Scott would like to share.
You guys all know Scott.
Yeah.
Good, because you're gonna see his face a lot more and you're gonna see money in the next few years, so. I just brought a couple of these, sorry. What this is, is for the group to be aware of. One thing that our carrier now has available is the ability to endorse on drainage districts that we are trustees over to the policy. Kind of in response to the Des Moines Water Works situation, even though in that specific situation, coverage really isn't applying because that's a pollution, nitrate in water is a pollution, pollution exclusion situation. But just in general, it was something that, that they made available. There's some specific requirements. Number one, it's, our board has to act as the trustees of the drainage district. Each, you know, in legally, each district has its own legal entity, separate legal entity. So we have to be the trustees. The district, if the district is wholly within the county, there's a small, there's an application. That's what most of that is back there, just shows a sample application can be submitted. That can be completed and it's a hundred dollar endorsement to add that on to the district. If it's shared across county lines or has mixed trustee involvement, there's still eligibility. That's just a separate, they have to kind of look at the separate situations. It may be more than a hundred dollar contribution for that. And there's probably a slightly different application involved for those. So that's kind of what I wanted to bring to your attention to let you know that that is available. Our policy, I mean, the supervisors as supervisors, you already have that there's a situation where a district is named and the supervisor is named. All those supervisors are going to have protection, it's just the districts. They're ultimately probably going to be the one to have to fund settlement if there ever is a settlement. And, you know, what does that mean? Assessment to landowners or something of that nature. So this is just a way, as, you know, wearing your trustee hat.
To offer coverage.
To offer coverage, but as members of the district. Right. And the policy does offer, you know, our policy offers a $25,000, what they call broad legal defense coverage for any case where there's not coverage, you know. So even the pollution piece, or nitrate pollution piece, where they're going to say, well, pollution's excluded under our policy, there's $25,000 of at least broad legal defense, which will probably get burnt up in a hurry, but there's something there. Then, you know, that the districts can also be tied into as well. So that's just something I wanted to bring to your attention that is now available and can be done.
So that's a hundred dollars per district?
Per district.
Inside the county.
Right, yeah, if it's the.
And how much added coverage does that give? Is it just that $25,000?
Well, it makes them, no, it makes them a part of the county policy.
Okay, so they're under our house.
Right.
So they're dealing with $2 million, $4 million.
Right.
You got a $126,000, you got a $126,000.
Right, but you probably would, chances are you would assess that to the district, you know, and I don't know how that would work.
They hold on, can you be selective?
I think whatever you submit an application for. And then, yeah, those that are wholly captured within the county, that can be done. And you said if it's shared with Pocahontas or Cusworth or Wright, there's still eligibility. There's just a little different process, maybe a little different contribution there.
And we got two farmers back there. What do you guys think about that? Any comments? Gary, is that worth having or not? Bob, what do you think?
I, I don't know. You'd have to look into it and see. What kind of liabilities are you going to have on the district? I guess would be my question. You know, is there a liability if this house collapses and somebody falls in it? Is that, is that covered currently or not? Or, you know, so like for instance, DD2, if I go across my field this fall and all of a sudden there's a big hole and I run my combine in it and I damage my combine 100%, my crop, my insurance will cover me on that. But do I sue the district? Is this what this is going to cover? Or is this covering what the county's already got?
That's a good question.
That's exactly what happened last fall, Rob running into that hole with DD2.
Oh, yeah, it's happened many times. I've seen it happen.
I mean, obviously, that, I don't know what kind of a claim you can have other than, let's say, pollution on the, on the district or something like that. We don't know where it's going in the future. Some districts, you can't, can you put something on and something not, or, you know.
Yeah, I think it's elective, whatever.
I suppose that's one of those things you have to ask each individual district, I suppose. A hundred dollars for 4,000 acres in DD2, that's not a bad thing.
A district's not for $6 million coverage.
So we would not have been covered at all on that one where I get to that.
I don't know. Would that cover that?
Right, because right now, what they're saying is drainage districts are their own separate legal entity. So technically, a claim would come against the drainage district. There's not a policy right now that would provide coverage. If, you know, the supervisors as trustees, all you have right now is protection if you're named as trustees in a lawsuit. But the ultimate settlement's going to come from the district itself and that you represent. And so that's what this is trying to say is, yeah, there, there may be few and far between cases where it might happen. That's why it's only a hundred dollar premium. They understand that.
What do you think something like that would be covered? If they could come back, if a farmer could come back on a combine.
Yeah, I think, you know, if there's property damage that they would say that the district was legally liable for not identifying a sinkhole or a broken tile or a head wall collapses out or breaks out or something like that.
The elevator square, the field drops in and the same thing.
Right, or, you know, yeah, somebody gets, falls in, you know, there's a bodily injury liability claim as well as property.
High clearance players, who go into the field at a pretty high rate of speed and they fall on one of those, the guy's going right through the windshield.
Yeah, you know, the property damage side of it is probably more minor compared to a bodily injury situation.
How about the liability for construction? For instance, if we would have had this in place before DD2 or in place right now with the new tile system going in and the contractor doesn't feel he got paid adequately, would it cover him suing back to the district? I mean, it's just a question. I mean, you don't have to answer it. I know it's not a legal opinion, but, I mean, those are things that you can think of too.
That would be, that would be a payment dispute would be tough.
So you're talking about property damage or personal injury?
Yeah, this has got to be along the lines of property damage and bodily injury.
But even those two things, I mean, there's many people have fallen in the tile holes before.
Well, when you put DD2, you had that open hole on Highway 3 there for three weeks, no bed, no house. And somebody running that hole, this is, I would have been in trouble.
I would imagine if you asked the district if they were in it.
So that's.
It's good.
Let you know that it's available and I'll have to make some extra confidence.
Yeah, you don't know what you're doing to that side of the law.
Well, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know if that's the right way or not.
Yeah.
Would you say the cost would be for that insurance?
It's a $100 per district. If, if the district is completely within side Humboldt County and there's no outside trustees, these folks here are your trustees for that, those are the kind of two main requirements. Then it falls under $100 per district. If it's a district that shares Pocahontas or shares Cusworth, or maybe there's outside trustees that are involved in the board, they're still eligible, it's just maybe a different cost associated with that.
They're just tying onto this, they're just tying onto our liability here and they're utilizing what we're spending this $169,000 for. So I mean, it's kind of got value in that sense, I thought. It's a whole lot cheaper than each.
$100.
I know. I got a hole too. Yeah, I bet there's, I have a farmer that has eventually had a combine, hit a hole once or twice.
The only thing to really save Rob that day was he was slow. So slow because he knew he was getting over that two tile. But the wind was from behind him, he couldn't see, he dropped right in that hole. He'd been going all the way to the side of the road.
Yeah, I know a lady that hit one about six years ago and her head went into the windshield. It's lucky she didn't get a compression out of the deal, but she was going three, three and a half mile an hour because she knew there was a tile in it. All right, I'm going to talk to Trish about that.
It looks to me like we need to take that figure based on the value of maybe 120 range. But we also need to approve next year's code here, renewal. As we did, if anybody, any other discussion on that, we have a little discussion. Thank you very much.
And you do have, you do have a voucher here of $892.97 that gets subtracted from that.
Makes it worthwhile.
I keep checking what I'm doing.
Yeah.
Almost free, $892 out of $169,000.
I wouldn't go that far.
But that's just.
I'll move the interview up. I agree with the insurance.
Okay, we have a motion by Harlem to approve the renewal on the address for next year. Are we here second?
I'll second.
Yeah, discussion. I assume you automatically think that $8,000 is off the record. We have to cash that in the payment premium.
$800.
$800.
No, I'll just get, when I submit a really breakdown to Peggy and Trish, that'll be taken off the bottom line. So actually, your, your net cost of the county is going to be $169,000.
So Scott, would you check into the joint ones to see what that would involve? Because if we were going to do this on.
Especially in terms where we'd have controlling interest, you know.
If you've got 90% of the drainage in there, that's probably, if we only had 10%, I don't know. But I mean, let's find out what the cost is coming out to.
Yeah, I'll see if there's a separate application or if we use the same thing. They say it might be $200, I'll find that out, so.
Or maybe even split it with the other county if they're willing to do it, you know, we just find out.
Okay, we have a motion for a vote of renewal as quoted. Mr. President, say hi.
Hi.
Oh, Dave, we'll be curious. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Chris. This is just a proxy in case something comes up where we have to respond to a membership vote. We have Peggy and Pat appointed. And I just need to, I gotta put this in, send it in. So if you want to.
Are you the assistant?
Yeah. It's called our assistant.
Yeah, I got it.
And then this is just kind of a tool and a test that.
I didn't have any motion for any drainage.
So maybe.
All right, second. All right, Karen, you want to say hi? Oh, Dave, we are in drainage, black risk.
Good idea.
I think that's scary.
Two seconds.
More, more. More, more.
Yeah.
Okay. The motion. Okay. The motion would be then defer payment. For instead.
And I would direct Rick to get this information to him as soon as possible.
Right away.
And then maybe they get some kind of response back. That's all I can do.
Other discussion?
What else you can do?
All those favorite of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Vote aye. Motion, Trish. Next thing we have is reschedule.
I have a question. Like that four thousand fix the whole area, Gary, so that Marso bid that, he just submit a claim and he gets so.
Paid that, it was on a work order.
So that's been paid then?
Yeah, and just keep tally on all that before submitting to the bond company. Should first submit it to the bond company.
I haven't.
So that money is in the kitty someplace?
No, it goes out as a warrant.
Goes out as a warrant. So you pay him with a warrant then?
Unless somebody purchases it. Oh, but it'd still be in a warrant, collecting interest.
So Marso has the option of accepting the warrant or selling it to Carl.
Does that include? I believe it did.
He usually has pretty detailed summaries.
I think it was.
Yeah. Yeah, I think he did have it. Did I sign that one?
I don't.
Somebody did, I don't know, I saw that one.
I think it was a clean.
We can check, yeah, but I think it did. Doug's pretty good about getting everything.
Yeah, he's very thorough with them when he submits them usually.
I guess, you know, it needs to be kind of thought about a little bit. The thing that's getting scary on this whole thing now is this thing keeps dragging on, these interests on these warrants isn't really adding up. And I know people are not going to be happy about it. My opinion is at some point you've got to go to the bonding company and say, this is part of the reason we had to extend this out because there's all these problems. This interest should be renewed or paid for. The bonding company is going to, I hope, can step in on that too because I'm sure nobody wants to pay that full amount of interest.
That'd be definitely part of your claim.
I know that's going to be a problem with the landowners.
It's not the landlord's problem with interest.
But part of the problem is we couldn't close out the project because of all these issues. So I think that's all got to be brought out.
Definitely part of your claim, Jerry. Absolutely.
Absolutely. It's got to be.
Got to be.
The bonding. I wouldn't want to pay that interest and I know the landowners don't want to pay it.
That's right.
Our next item, the other night, we had a work section on DD one twenty-five Gilmore City. And after that work section, we kind of agreed that we're going to have to continue the hearing until end of twenty-one. So that's our next item here.
DD two.
DD two.
DD two.
DD two.
No, that's right.
And I don't know if we got, what do you think, Trish? Do we have any certain data? How are we going to state this?
I would say until further notice. And then I'll send out a notice. And then I'll have a copy of the reclass available like at City Hall. Make copies from there and, or here, or whatever.
I found some properties where we may have given, not included enough acreage for Davis in Flat O'Eye. So we need to do a review of all those properties and be sure we have the right acres. And I will do that personally, but we have the right acres in I and the right acres in two. And then I will meet with the commissioners again and go over, and I'm glad Brent was there and he was taking notes. And Pat Sharp, she'll pick up on the notes. So we'll meet again and review it all.
Let me ask you another question. I'm not great up on grains, but I'd like to ask you a question. Say we got, I have a thing, I'll figure a thousand dollar per acre assessment for the farm alone right here.
Yeah.
I don't cross the fence here. We got one acre lot, unapproved, no buildings in town. Would that be one thousand of an acre then? Why shouldn't it be a five hundred dollar assessment for that line? And then we've got project fall. The farmer gets a thousand dollars an acre. The guy in town's got one thousand of the acre and you get a five hundred dollar assessment. Not approved, no house on it?
If it's, okay, if it's, we look at the point range on residential compared to ag. And we did go back and make some changes before the final submittal where even though lots were subdivided, if it was being farmed, it was treated as ag ground. So if it's a grassed lot in town, they'd be towards the minimum of the residential payments. And that's what has ended up high. Is, you know, this has worked in several other districts, but it's not working in this one. The residential ones ended up high compared to the ag.
Then we had a discussion too, and then Bob, we have some city limits as being farmed. Is that right? How you doing, Trish, you know that?
Well, if it's in the city limits but farmed, we treat it as ag.
In other words, if you plant a farm in that city lot, you'd be a lot of it off.
Yeah. Yeah, technically.
True. And some of the others stating that their lots were zoned commercial, so they're getting assessed at even a higher level even though they're just grass.
Still grass on some of the commercial. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's.
I did check into that on that one.
Did you?
And there is a building there.
There is.
Shed in it. There's a code section that came through that says if the building is not attached to or directly near a home, it's deemed commercial. And it's like a mortgage building type thing. So it is right.
Couple of years ago, I remember attorneys telling us that when you have rural urban area, you're going to have problems. Is your move itself this time?
Yeah. We can do an ag reclassification for two to three dollars an acre. I mean, we did that on eighteen. Actually, it was a little under two to start with until we did some revisions. But, yeah, you get into town and you get these kinds of complications, but I think.
Is that in the code then or something about city lots?
No.
What the minimum point is?
No.
You said the other day that you started like at forty?
Twenty-five on residential.
Twenty-five, why they said forty?
Commercial was forty or forty-five starting.
Okay.
Yeah.
But even twenty-five seems high to me.
Well, and that's where historically it has not seemed unbalanced. This one seems unbalanced. So that's why Pat and Brent and I need to review the basic premise of where you start with the points per acre, ag, residential, commercial.
What blows my mind is that there are things right here. I don't understand. Either one of this side of the fence is being assessed at two thousand dollars an acre. On this side of the fence, just back to the bend down, same plot, same area, no building there. It's the same price, five hundred dollars for three thousand square feet.
Well, if the soils are the same, same use, they should be very close.
Per acre.
Per acre. That's right. That's right.
That's what we got to get to. I think that makes people happier, you know, if they have the same property cost.
Yes.
I think that's their concern.
Mm-hmm. Yes, that'd be part of what's read on here.
Do they have a legitimate point though that, uh, the main down at the bottom is part of their assessment? The improvement of that main where it dumps into the ditch for what that bottom mile or whatever it is?
Right.
And that ties into the old tile line, what does the district in Gilmore City, uh?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two. And they're saying those people should only be paying for that improvement to that last mile on the project.
The people that go to the west and south, that is all they're paying for. The trick is where is that divide in Gilmore? And I, I know Bob has said the eastern portion of Gilmore goes east. I mean, I think that's a given.
But there's no tile there.
Yes.
There is tile.
But we're separate.
But that's not part of the district thing about it?
It's eighty-nine-two.
Okay.
It's eighty-nine-two. It's a block south of Main, block east of Main Street. There's a tile right behind Coop. And that tile goes south under the railroad track, goes down the county block top, goes back across the field by farm underneath, um, two thirtieth, into Hodgson Farm, goes down underneath the railroad track and eventually put her into the vein down there.
Okay, so should they be paying?
They are assessed on the main, yes.
Okay, I agree with that.
Yeah.
But there's an added charge.
But those are people further east. They go east. Some of that range.
Where is the tile there?
Further east, it used to go into my ag range well, where we had out in the field.
Oh, there's your. So is there this tile around about private tile?
It used to be private tile. It used to go out that direction and there's, it hooks into the Earl's. Actually, it dumps surface water and goes, surface water goes that way.
And that's where they benefit from the ag will pay assistance and the ag will be closed.
That wasn't explained very well. I didn't think at the meeting.
Right.
Well, I didn't want to interrupt that because there's too many unhappy campers that remind me of that. And I'm the lone farmer standing there, you know?
Yeah, kind of. But I'm glad you caught it right afterwards.
But there, I have a, I have a sheet at home. Back eighteen, seventeen, eighteen years ago, we played, we applied for the DNR permit. There was like six intakes along the east side of town of Gilmore City that weren't closed, that should have been closed because they eventually led to the drainage well. And so what happened is several of those got cut off. Actually, went out in the field, dug up, plugged them and they didn't work. Privately done.
Because they.
...a warrant then?
Unless somebody purchases it. Oh, but it'd still be in a warrant, collecting interest.
So, Marso has the option of accepting the warrant?
Mm-hmm.
Or selling it to Carl.
Did that include, did that include?
Uh... I believe it did.
He usually has pretty detailed summaries.
Yeah. Yeah, I think he did have it. Did I sign that one?
Um...
Somebody did. I don't know. I saw that one. We can check. Yeah, but I think he did. Doug's pretty good about getting everything.
Yeah, he's very thorough with them when he submits them usually.
I guess, you know, it needs to be kind of thought about a little bit. The thing that's getting scary on this whole thing now is this thing keeps dragging on. These interests on these warrants isn't really adding up. And I know people are not going to be happy about it. My opinion is at some point you've got to go to the bonding company and say, "This is part of the reason we had to extend this out because there's all these problems. This interest should be renewed or paid for." The bonding company's going to, I hope, can step in on that too because I'm sure nobody wants to pay that full amount of interest.
That would be definitely part of your claim.
I know that's going to be a problem with the landlords.
It's not the landlord's problem with interest.
But part of the problem is we couldn't close out the project because of all these issues. So, I think that's all got to be brought out.
Definitely part of your claim, Gary. Absolutely.
Absolutely. It's got to be part of the bonding. I wouldn't want to pay that interest. And I know the landlords don't want to pay it.
That's right.
Our next item, the other night, we had a work session on DD 125 Gilmore City. And after that work session, we finally agreed that we're going to have to get a senior hearing to go into 21. So, that's our next item here.
DD 2.
DD 2.
DD 2.
DD 2, lateral one.
No, that's right.
And I don't know if we got, what do you think, Gary? Do we have any certain data? How are we going to state this?
I would say until further notice. And then I'll send out a notice. And then I'll have a copy of the reclass available like at City Hall. Make copies from there and, or here, or whatever.
I found some properties where we may have given, not included enough acreage for Davis and lateral I. So, we need to do a review of all those properties and be sure we have the right acres. And I will do that personally, but we have the right acres in I and the right acres in II. And then I will meet with the commissioners again and go over. And I'm glad Brent was there and he was taking notes. And Pat Sharp, she'll pick up on the notes. So, we'll meet again and review it all.
Let me ask you another question. I'm not great up on range. But I'd like to ask you a question. Say, we got, I have a thing or figure, a thousand dollar per acre assessment for the farm line right here.
Yep.
I don't cross the fence here. We got one acre lot, unimproved, no buildings in town. Would that be one thousand of an acre then? Why shouldn't it be a five hundred dollar assessment for that line? And then we've got project Paul. The farmer gets a thousand dollars an acre. The guy in town's got one thousand of an acre and you give him five hundred dollars. Not approved, no house on it?
If it's, okay, if it's... We look at the point range on residential compared to ag. And we did go back and make some changes before the final submittal where even though lots were subdivided, if it was being farmed, it was treated as ag ground. So, if it's a grassed lot in town, they'd be towards the minimum of the residential payments. And that's what has ended up high. Is, you know, this has worked in several other districts, but it's not working in this one. The residential ones ended up high compared to the ag.
Then we had a discussion too, and then Bob, we have some city limits as being farmed. Is that right? So, how you doing, anything on that?
Well, if it's in the city limits but farmed, we treat it as ag.
In other words, if you plant farm in a city lot, you'd be a lot better off.
Yeah, yeah, technically.
True. And some of the owners stating that their lots were zoned commercial so they're getting assessed at even a higher level even though they're just grass.
Still grass on some of the commercial. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's...
I did check into that on that one.
Did you?
And there is a building there.
There is.
Shed in it. There's a quote section that came through that says, "If the building is not attached to or directly near a home, it's deemed commercial." Like a more in-building type thing. So, it is right?
A couple of years ago, I remember attorneys telling us that when you have rural urban area, you're going to have problems. Does your move itself this time?
Yeah. We can do an ag reclassification for two to three dollars an acre. We did that on eighteen. Actually, it was a little under two to start with till we did some revisions. But, yeah, you get into town and you get these kinds of complications. I think...
Is that in the code then or something about city lots?
No.
What the minimum point is?
No.
You said the other day that you started like at forty?
Twenty-five on residential.
Twenty-five? Why did it say forty?
Commercial was forty or forty-five starting.
Okay.
Yeah.
But even twenty-five seems high to me.
Well, and that's where historically it has not seemed unbalanced. This one seems unbalanced. So, that's why Pat and Brent and I need to review the basic premise of where you start with the points per acre, ag, residential, commercial.
What blows my mind is that there are fence right here. I'm not, I don't understand. Either one of this side of fence is being assessed at two thousand dollars an acre. On this side of fence, just back to the fence down, same plot, same area, no building there. It's a say it's a pipe, five hundred dollars for three thousand square feet?
Well, if the soils are the same, it's the same use, they should be very close.
Per acre.
Per acre. That's right. That's right.
That's what we got to get to. I think that makes people happier when they have the same corporate cost.
Yes, yes.
I think that's their concern.
Mm-hmm. Yes, that would be part of what's read on here.
Do they have a legitimate point though that, uh, the main down at the bottom is part of their assessment, the improvement of that main? Where it runs into the ditch for what that bottom mile or whatever it is.
Right.
And that ties into the old tile line. What does the district in Gilmore City, uh...
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two. And they're saying those people should only be paying for that improvement to that last mile on the project.
The people that go to the west and south, that is all they're paying for. The trick is where is that divide in Gilmore? And I know Bob has said the eastern portion of Gilmore goes east. I mean, I think that's a given.
So, there's no tile there?
Yes.
There is tile. But that's not part of the district thing about it?
It's eighty-nine-two.
Okay.
It's eighty-nine-two. It's a block south of Main, block east of Main Street. There's a tile right behind Co-op. And that tile goes south under the railroad track, goes down the county block top, goes back across the field by Farm underneath, um, Two Thirtyth, into Hodgson Farm, goes down underneath the railroad track, and eventually put her into the vein down there.
Okay, so should they be paying?
They are assessed on the main, yes.
Okay, I agree with that.
Yeah.
But there's an added charge.
But those are people further east. They go east.
Through the body side lane, where's the tile there?
Further east. It used to go into my ag range well, but we had out in the field.
Oh, there's your... So, yeah. Is there this tile around about private tile?
It used to be private tile. It used to go out that direction. And there's, it hooked into the Earl's. Actually, it dumps surface water. And goes, surface water goes that way.
And that's where they benefit from the ag will pay assistance and the ag will be...
That wasn't explained very well. I didn't get the meeting.
Right.
Well, I didn't want to interrupt that because there's too many unhappy people that were my name in the chat. And I'm the lone farmer standing there, you know?
Yeah, kind of. But I'm glad you caught it right afterwards.
But I have a sheet at home. Back eighteen, seventeen, eighteen years ago, we applied for the DNR permit.
Okay.
There was like six intakes along the east side of town of Gilmore City that weren't closed, that should have been closed because they eventually led to the drain. And so, what happened is several of those got cut off. Actually, went out in the field, dug up, plugged them, and they didn't work. Privately done.
Because they should have been closed. Yeah.
Well, this is all stuff for Brent and you fans got to know.
Absolutely.
But basically, when you look at Main Street of Gilmore City, you drive down it, water goes west, from the west side of Main Street, water goes east from the east side of Main Street. They're really close. Main Street time.
Yeah.
That's going to make sense.
For the study on this, actually, today is going to have a continuation of the hearing on DD 2 Main and Lateral One. And we're going to have to benefit the committee and let's come back to some future date. So, we're just having a motion that sounds to me like we defer that to a future date.
Right, and you won't have to call this a continuation if you're giving a notice because to do a continuation, it has to be to a certain date and time. And I'm not sure you want to do that. So, it's just, yeah.
Delay it.
You delay the hearing and agree to provide new notice to the landlords. See, a motion to delay the reclass hearing on DD 2.
I'll second.
Second. And with that, we will have another notice mailed to the landlords.
Yes.
And we talked one about, including a whole bunch of notices. We don't see people definitely we're going to notify them.
I'll send a notice to everybody. But the classification, we want to send that out again. I'll just have available to, put at the City Hall probably at here.
Yes, so they get a good idea. Look at it. If they look at it, add. Absolutely.
Other discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oden A, motion carried. Our next item is phase number one, the Dimmer Underground.
Can we go back to DD 2?
Sure.
You said you paid claims in the past on DD 2. Have they all been warrants? Because I know you paid Roger Stone. Was that a warrant paid to him or cash? Jeff? You paid the people that routed the tiles in the first mile?
I would have to go back and look because there was some money available through IDLs at that time that I had put back into the account to pay off some of that. So, I'm not sure exactly how each one of them got paid. Do you want me to...
I was just asking, did you hear us talking about warrants here?
Yeah.
I was wondering if half the work that's been done on this, the six that's been done by warrants or by actual, check, cash, you know, whatever.
No, I wouldn't have to look. I don't know what the interest is.
I didn't know how many warrants were set out there, drawn money, interest already. You don't have an option.
Uh, yeah.
Well, you utilized the money whenever you could, when the money was there to pay things off.
Yeah, and see, this money goes for the oldest warrant.
Sort of.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we have an item for, this is a pay order number one, the Dimmer Underground for DD 125. Other discussion, anything?
How much is that?
Seventy-one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty cents.
They are now, um... Gary, do they have a pipe in like to the south end of your acreage out there? That's about where I think it is.
Pass.
Okay, so...
Right, word, Curtis.
Okay, so were his acreages out there? Um, yeah, they're just south of that with the line. So, they're approaching the road right now. Doing a good job with cleanup. Hopefully, you've gotten out there and had a chance to look. Yeah, they're keeping the cleanup close to the pipe installation. It's just really nice looking jobs.
Like they're letting it nice, true.
Yes. So, yeah, we're recommending that you pay this payment number one.
Seventy-one thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty cents, and eight cents.
So, move.
Seventy... Seventy-one thousand four fifty-eight twenty, payment number one.
I'll make it most approved, payment number one.
Gary, thank you, Matt Moore. All those in favor say aye. Oden A, motion carried. Dimmer Underground. We have other things you want to talk about in range? Um, we do have a protest on their own.
Who's the appraisers in that one, one, five, Rich, did they create a point again?
Uh... I don't think so. Don't think so.
I went back to some fakers and I see where they were trying out a certain date.
I can look them up.
Well, we should do it right away because I had that report ready for a while.
Good to meet the appraisers. And I might just pull this out because when I put this appraisal report together, I looked at the value of the easement. Now, what I'm proposing is that we notify the landowners and have them make a claim for crop loss. Other counties are doing that more instead of just a payment whether they lose a crop or not kind of thing. So, um, I'm just, I'd like to approach it that way because I think the landowner has a good feel for what's actual loss. And we'll measure it too, just to have a second check on it.
Well, I took ours out there. I just took it to the stadium. You can see it on the map.
Yes.
Highlighted it right down.
Oh, yeah, you can do it. Yeah.
One hundred to an acre.
Yep. I can tell also they accept claims and we verify them. That I feel a little better doing it that way.
With maps nowadays, they don't lie.
Yeah, that's right. So, um...
I mean, it's as accurate as you can get.
Yeah.
They don't have anything but they have been assigned.
They have been assigned.
No.
They have not been assigned. Okay. Agenda for next week?
You got any other, I'm hoping you might go put together this, I know it's continuation.
Oh, for the reclass? Um, I probably need a few days in this week. My goal would be to meet with the commissioners no later than next week. I got a phone. And then we'll have a better idea where to run.
Are we going to be able to get this thing so it can be taken care of and set up?
New hearing means thirty days is the issue. Uh, that's what we're up against. We're not going to take long to redo this.
I just mean, everything else needs to be ready so that if she's still got time to get assessments out.
Yes, yes, get that interest cut off. Mm-hmm. I think a meeting next week with the commissioners and then a rework and then another meeting, and I think we may have it.
So, meet with Mike Bowden to...
Yeah.
Anything else in range? Anything else for our direct?
Let me look quick. Meet with Gary Jensen. I'm not sure what district it is. He's looking at a possible annexation, voluntary annexation. Oh, thirty-three branch A, we have the reclass ready to meet with commissioners. We thought we were going to be able to use the old one, but there weren't any reductions done for distance from the improvement. So, I'm going to be meeting with them probably at the same time next week. I think that's it.
Motion to go out of range.
Motion to go out of range for Gary. Thank you. Thank you, Matt Harland. All those in favor of going on a green, say aye. Oden A, motion carried. We're back in general place. Gary, would you have a minute to talk about 125? Okay.
Well, can we get Bob on this one maybe? She got mine in at six to left. And Brett?
Um, we'll look.
Look.
Yeah.
Because I'd like to have him on.
Mm-hmm. It'd be good.
I'd like to have him on.
Yeah. We did get him on six because he, because Pat and, um...
Right, Pat and Brett.
Both had interest in it. So, yeah.
Well, maybe get back to let us know which ones do have interest and which ones don't.
Yep.
Hold on, he's up.
Yep, here it goes.
We're ready for your call. We're back in general station. Next item is business for Dixon County Engineering. So, all yours. The thing you talked about is...
Uh, yes, we had letting for two local projects last week on Wednesday. And I believe I got yous, you bid tabs in your packet.
Did you get them?
Yep. Yeah, I'm trying to see what they did with it. All the papers just shuffled around this morning. Through the four eyes and the gooks like me. There you go.
Didn't bring his glasses.
You got glasses now. Uh, several of the board members were at the letting and know how this went. But we recommend award for the LC 192-382 Progressive Structures and the other project LC 29-1000 to Riley Construction. At reviewing the bids, um, we were in the ballpark and very competitive except for the pavement replacement. And that kicked us. We needed about twice the money in pavement replacement down there on the, uh, 29-1000 on that C-26 project. We are putting the white topping, putting concrete full depth patch back in. Uh, while the project is closed on that project, the other project up on the Chantlin Box Culvert, we are not putting any asphalt in or resurfacing at this time. But both of them, I would recommend that we approve the 192-380 of the Chantlin Box Culvert to Progressive Structures of Alcatraz, Iowa for eighty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-five. And on a separate, a motion would be to approve project number LC 29-1000, the C-26 Box Culvert to Riley Construction of Ocean or Oshan? Or how do they say that?
It's progressive, Oshan.
Oshan, there you go. Oshan. If somebody just got rips up there, it does no fair. Oshan. Iowa for one thirty-two oh seventy-three, one hundred and thirty-two thousand seventy-three dollars.
I'll make a motion of project LC 192-380, the Chantlin Box Culvert, for eighty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Thank you, Matt Moore. Any other discussion on the Box Culvert?
And again, this is just to award the projects, which means that we intend to implement, execute a contract when they supply us a signed contract, bonds, and insurance. And that's usually within a couple of weeks.
All those in favor of Gary's motion saying aye? Oden A? All right. Dr. Nick construction, Dr. Rick, LC 29,000. Dr. Nick construction, one hundred and thirty-two thousand oh seventy-three. Motion by Harland.
Oh, second.
Thank you, Matt Rick. All those in favor of the motion, saying aye? Oden A, motion carried.
All right, second order of business is approved contract for fiscal year 2016 secondary roads fuel. And what we have requested proposals, and we got proposals from, uh, from four different suppliers, W&amp;H, Star Energy Pro Co-op, and Maxio Co-op. They gave us price adjustments, and I have a quote summary to you. And I am here to tell you that we propose to sign a contract with W&amp;H Co-op for ten cents a handling charge for the gas, all twelve for number one, ten for number two diesel, and thirteen for Ruby for a premium. And that would be with the numbers we picked, gallon each. It's an estimate of eighty-six hundred and ninety dollars. But again, what we take quotes on is the handling charge. It's a price above a rack price. The rack pipes fluctuates weekly. We supply the price to the suppliers and then they give their margin. In this case, it's something between ten cents and fifteen cents.
Okay, you have before you the votes here and all the recommendations we signed contracts with W&amp;H Co-op, the fuel co.
I'm moving this to the contract.
Motion by Moore.
Oh, second.
Thank you, Matt Rick. Other discussion concerning fuel co? All those in favor say aye? Oden A, motion carried.
Here's three contracts already executed by W&amp;H. Um, and lastly is approved lost funds for secondary roads 2015 projects improvements. What I've done and proposed to pull from lost funds from last year are those three local projects that we did late in the year. Uh, that Vernon on one hundred and thirtieth of Box Culvert, then Nevada Avenue, uh, right up here in Grove, north of the old landfill, and then clear up southwest of St. Joe on one hundred and second, just west of 169. The total of those projects for lost funds is just a hair over three hundred thousand, three hundred thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars. Our actual balance before we pull that out in lost funds was just a hair more than that. And it is three hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and five dollars. So, we would spend that lost fund down to about thirty thousand plus minus. Budgeted was two hundred and fifty, and I propose to pull three hundred thousand and dedicate it to those projects.
So, what we're going to do is transfer three hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and five dollars, right?
No.
Three hundred thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars.
It's on this sheet here about that one. Yeah.
Three hundred thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. Motion by Harland.
Oh, second.
Thank you, Matt Rick.
Uh, discussion just a second. I had it on the agenda, and Peggy also had it somewhere down there. Whatever the terminology Peggy uses is what this should be recorded as. She's got an approved transfer to secondary roads lost funds. This officially is what I'm recommending, the three hundred thousand cover that agendized item by Peggy. It's not, it's the same thing, but I want the verbiage to be what Peggy says it needs to be.
So, you can take any of those projects and improvements.
Well, no, it's really, it's approved those projects and assign the transfer. Yes, it's transfer the three hundred thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars to lost funds.
From, yeah, from lost funds.
From lost. Right, true, right. But we're dedicating these projects is what it allows to.
Out of those funds.
And the verbiage is what it's, she handles what verb needs to be.
Okay.
And it's a transfer is the right term.
Got that down, Chris?
Because I have it up higher and she's got it lower. I didn't know if she had it on there.
Okay, Chris has got the motion down according to correct verbiage.
Perfect.
Permitting the lost fund transfer to secondary roads, say aye? Oden A, motion carried.
Um, other business this morning, we had a storm that rode through and then a little follow-up with more rain, some trees down. I haven't heard anything of any, uh, other than trees at this point. A few power lines snapped some south of town, some north of town.
Some water crossed gravel in here?
There's some water across roads, but again, it came so fast that by the time we got to one of them that was reported and earlier, it had already subsided. But then it was raining at the time. It'll come back up. But I don't think it's anything serious at this point. I mean, rain makes grain, I guess. But other ways, that's what I had this morning. A work session I'd like, and I assume that will be at, where do you want me into the procedure, I guess, before or after their other work session?
Well, if the other one's closed session.
Right.
And then do it after that.
After that. So, I'm going to probably, if somebody can text or whatever, Dave Pollan and I will slide in in the next five minutes to get in.
Anything else for Swan?
Uh, not that I have this morning. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. And we'll get back to you after we do the presentation. Moving along in our agenda this morning, we have a car works permit for Swan family. I think this is an annual event.
Sunday.
Thank you, Matt Harland.
Second.
Thank you, Matt Moore.
What day did they have it on?
Um, they gave July eleventh.
Okay.
Okay, the motion was laid, second, this one, family, fireworks permit for July the seventh.
Could you give the motion, Matt?
Or, or Harland. Those in favor, aye? Oden A, motion carried. Next item, set time and date for admitting ordinances. What do we have to do here in Adam's Big Day?
Um, Peggy's got just set the date of July twentieth at eight thirty-six a.m. To amend. To amend the orders.
Okay, July twentieth.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Harland, by Jerry. Jerry? You have a second?
One second.
Okay, we have motion seconds, we set the date to review ordinances from July twentieth, eight thirty a.m. All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. We have the transfer from Royal Services Fund, Royal Services Funds to Secondary Roads.
Who is that?
Uh, it's in here, it's in these other colored pages.
Oh, it's in here somewhere.
Did we have that? Yeah. Transfer. So we're transferring from Royal Services Fund to Secondary Roads. I'll make a motion to transfer one hundred and three thousand dollars and forty, one hundred and, three thousand, forty-nine dollars.
Okay, motion to Jerry, transfer that amount of Royal Services to Secondary Roads, you hear a second?
Sorry.
Second by Harland. All those favor say aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. Next action, transfer secondary lost funds to secondary roads.
Hmm, no, general basic fund to secondary.
General basics to secondary.
Yeah, that's the same amount. I'll make a motion again to transfer one hundred and three thousand, forty-nine dollars from general basic fund to secondary roads fund. Sure. And that's what it says on this page. I am spoiling the-
Four hundred and forty-six dollars.
Well, that's coming up, isn't it?
I thought you just did the three.
This is from- From Royal Basic Funds.
Well, I'm not so sure.
This one, this one is, this one sends Royal.
What's the same?
Service, service.
General basic to secondary roads is a hundred and three. Well, Royal Services Fund to Secondary Roads is a four forty-six.
General Services. Transfer to Secondary Roads Fund. From.
Do you have a copy of this piece?
Yep. Transfer.
See, this one is secondary roads from Royal to secondary.
Right.
Can't say from Royal to secondary roads, so that would be the four forty-six.
That's the first one.
Yeah.
All right, I'll correct that motion to state that amount. Thanks, Harland, for catching that, I see that now.
Royal Services, Jerry.
Yeah, now we're on Royal Services, so that would be the, well, that's the four hundred one.
Right.
We voted on that one, I'll just correct that motion and-
Four forty-six.
Right.
Okay, enough, we're on.
And then I, I mean, yeah, so then I'll make a motion on general basic to do the hundred and, is that right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah. I'll make that motion.
How much would that be?
Hundred and, hundred and three, forty-nine. Forty-nine. One hundred and two thousand, forty-nine dollars.
Thirty-fourty-nine. You hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Harland.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close nay?
He ought to have enough money to operate now. Oh, he's still got one of them.
One more to go. Transfer to secondary roads lost funds to secondary roads.
That, what's with Paul did up there?
He did that earlier, Paul did that earlier.
Yeah, Paul wanted that, like, wait.
Okay. Anything else before we approve claims regarding the transfer? I think we got them all covered, did we?
Yeah.
These are huge complaints, anybody have a comment or concern about the claims?
Looks we got all the pages on the book.
Think they got them.
Got a little bit of fight, claims. We got thirty-six thousand, thirty-four dollars and ninety-six cents. Grady's one sixty-five, one-two-three, point five-one.
Motion by Harland, do I hear a second? Second by Moore. Play claims as stated, both Grady and General Fund. Other discussion? I know we had some sheets missing, but we've done it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. We have some board members to be appointed to various, uh, basic things because Harland being partying from us. Isle Grady District, what's your desire there?
Well, I've been accepted on that board as vice chairman, so I'll cover that one and I paid bills last Friday, I think. Whole stack of them.
We need a motion to appoint Jerry to the Grady District Association Board. You hear, motion by somebody?
Sure.
Motion by Harland, second by Rick. All those in favor appoint Jerry to Grady District Board, say aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. You guys always, Jerry, you're up. North Central Landfill. Rick, I think you're going to take that.
Well, I'll volunteer for that.
We need a motion-
I'll make a motion to approve Rick to the landfill, Isle Region.
All right.
Second.
Second by Moore. All those in favor of voting Rick to the Central Island Field Board, say aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carried. Now we get into the enterprise zone. Why don't we decide what's up here, what should we do?
Harland says he don't, they're not, don't even exist. Well, not much.
Do we need to keep it?
Well, I think you probably should. I'd recommend the chairman take care of that since he's right in town.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor of the board chairman say, taking care of it.
Not even going to have a discussion, I, I just, well, if they don't meet, can't be too scared.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close nay? Okay. L E P C.
I thought we already did this.
Well, we talked about what we were going to do, but we didn't have it on the agenda.
Taken over.
Yeah, this makes it official.
Yeah, this is official, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve more to the L E P C board.
What is that?
That's what I asked.
They pay some business.
They pay some bills. Harland, what does this initial stand for for the public?
Print group. Local Emergency Planning Commission.
Big words.
Moore's good job on that. All those in favor of Moore being appointed, those who say aye?
Aye.
Close nay?
Who's second?
Who makes the second?
I part.
Yeah, here we go.
Now we have Grady Show headman team. I think we talked about-
They're both basically the same. Same place to be.
But Moore's got both of them.
Have that motion reflect both of those, yeah.
Okay, we have two meetings for it, what do you do, Jerry?
Okay, well, Friday, went and paid bills for Isle Grady District and looks out really nice. It's right downtown at Edward Jones and she's very nice, Michelle's a very nice person to work with. She went through it, I didn't have a lot of, no, it wasn't, that wasn't Friday, that was, um, did I left? Um, let me take a minute here. That was, um, Wednesday morning, because I left, it's very full of that, so whether it was Wednesday or it was helping out. Yeah. And, um, I didn't have enough time to stick around, but she's going to take me to the back room sometime and show me a more of a flow-through and how those are going through the different, I have a general understanding, but she went, I said, yeah, let's just take some time and I've got time and we'll go through that, so. That'll work out good, so, I think that's all I have.
Aren't you, were you here for the bid letting?
Oh, yeah, it's recorded in the business, though.
Yeah.
The bid letting, I guess, I was here for it, so.
Okay. Well, I was here for the bid letting on Wednesday and then, um, at ten o'clock and then Wednesday, then I went out to the food pantry and called about some air conditioning problems out there. Um, did a little repair to their ventilation, ventilation system. Um, something we probably need to look at is getting, uh, getting the air conditioning working better for the volunteers in there, because I went in, there was eighty-five degrees in there.
That's not right.
And their food products were not doing well. Um, here all it was, the air conditioner hadn't been turned on. Um, but just the little I know about ventilation, uh, heating and cooling, it's, it's not set up right. Uh, there was almost a furnace thing from the furnace. Um, I went around and shut all their vents to push more air into their area. Um, something needs to be addressed there to make it a little more comfortable for the volunteers because, uh, I mean, people are volunteering their time, most of them are elderly and it's, uh, hot. It's not that hot, yeah. But it, it was pushing more air, well, I got fixed that vent and got the air conditioner running. So it's something I think we need to look into and talk with Paul about possibly putting the thermostat on their side of the wall or trying to redo something.
We can review that really in the work session this morning, that'd be a good idea.
Good time to talk about.
Good idea.
And then I went over to Gilmore City Wednesday evening for that meeting and I've been down to the L E C a couple of times throughout the week, just checking on things and watching the demo work go on there. And hope we start digging at the end of this week. They're going to start tearing up some water lines and sewers.
Have you got everything moved to the-
Yeah, they're all moved over into the EOC and, uh, it's pretty congested in there, but they're going to make do. And also their air conditioner wasn't working too well, that other door opened and, and, uh- Yeah. So, I don't know if it's just all the bodies in there all day long, they couldn't keep up or what, but they had to call in the sands, come out and take a look at it, you know? So. That's your work?
Bid letting, I don't know. The community center over Gilmore that night on the Grady District. And third day, I called out to, uh, Grady District H K, section four of Augusta, water was coming up out of the intakes even, so there was a blocking someplace. I think it, myself, I think it blocked both in Humboldt County and someplace and in Kusco County, too. I think the tiles probably broke someplace in there. But then I reported it to Trish. Friday, then I had Central Iowa driven out a tension in Eldora and we still, just under a million dollars on that loan, two million dollar loan for, we've done those additions and we'll have that paid off in, uh, twenty sixteen. We made just a little over a million dollars clear last year.
Have they got the beds up and running in that addition?